Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. The time is 7:00 p.m. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Robin Paffier.
Here.
Peter DiStefano was absent, and Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item consists of the approval of minutes from February 22, 2022, regular session; March 3, 2022, regular special session; March 8, 2022, work session; March 22, 2022, regular session; and development plan review, Union Fire District Station 6, installation of an 80-foot, three-post lattice simulcast radio tower with internally housed equipment located at 4124 Tower Hill Road, Route 1, AP 42-2, Lot 17, Town of South Kingstown Communications Department applicant, Union Fire District owner. Are there any changes or modifications to the consent agenda?
Hi, Maria.
Susan.
Could I take two of the week's worth of minutes off of the consent agenda, please?
Certainly.
February 22 and March 22.
Why don't we deal with those first? What are your corrections?
On the first one, on February 22, on the top of Page 2, it mentions that in the Holly Street project that two residences will be deed restricted. In the first paragraph, the top of Page 2?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we will correct that to represent three units.
Okay.
Okay.
The same question is on the other minutes, on March 22. On the top of Page 4, it also lists two units to be deed restricted.
That will be corrected.
Very good.
Thank you.
So we will amend those in any motion that might get passed. Anything else? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Susan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is a public hearing, development plan review advisory to zoning board, plant-based compassionate care, Inc. I have been informed by Jamie that there was an email sent today asking to table this item. Is that correct?
Correct, Madam Chair. The planning department did receive an email from James Callahan, the applicant's legal counsel, requesting that the planning board table any discussion and action on this item tonight, and they will further advise the board and staff on their intent to proceed.
Would someone like to make that motion?
A motion to table?
Table this item, yes.
Do I? Can we continue it to next month?
I?
Can I make a motion, please, to table Agenda Item D?
Continue.
Sorry. Continue Agenda Item D, public hearing, development plan review advisory to zoning for plant-based compassion care until the May meeting?
11th.
May 11th meeting.
We have a motion from Susan.
I'll second the motion.
Is it going to hold it on a work session or not a regular meeting?
Oh, is that not a regular meeting? Did I get that wrong?
That would be a...
Oh, you know what? I had the TRC written on my notes.
May 24, the next regular session meeting date?
May 24. Stand corrected. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next agenda item, development plan review advisory to zoning, JSC Management Group Burger King. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Yes, Todd Markovich, APD engineer.
Madam Chair, if you'll give us a moment. If these plans haven't been revised, we'll try and put them up on the screen.
Although we appreciate you bringing the drawings and the tripod.
Sure.
It's the site plan.
It should be C2.
Please proceed while we...
Sure.
...get the image on the monitor.
Again, so my name's Todd Markovich with APD Engineering. We've obviously been working with the town here for some time on this particular project, last appearing in front of the board in March. And at the time, there were some additional inputs, some comments, questions that we brought back to, again, our client and the drawing board and tried to address those as best as possible. So what we had sent in was a revised submission and kind of had a couple main components to that. One of the biggest components is the elimination of some of the parking spaces and the additional green space. We heard from the board last time that, obviously, the additional green space would be something that you guys would be desirable to the town. And so you'll note, you could see it on the exhibit on the screen, which is not necessarily the site plan, but the northeast corner, there used to be nine existing parking spaces Or the demolition plan. So we removed the nine parking spaces to the northeast, and you can see that that is now all a landscaped area. We additionally removed another few spaces opposite that, which would be kind of the backside of the drive-thru, and then as well as a couple spaces towards the streetfront adjacent to the pedestrian crosswalk there. So we've added additional landscaping and green space, obviously reduced stormwater impacts with that alone. In addition, we've increased the proposed bio-retention area, which would be noted between the drive-thru and the main north-south drive lane there. So we've increased the stormwater mitigation on the site as well. We've also added some striping to help delineate and to direct traffic. I know there were some concerns over entering in and not exiting at the driveway near the front of the store, so I believe last time we had showed you we had proposed one-way circulation throughout the site. But now in the back, you'll see we've kind of delineated that drive-through striping. Traffic would be on the inner side or the left lane to circulate to the drive-through, whereas the right lane would serve as kind of the bypass for any vehicles that would be parking and going inside the dining room and leaving to the north, of course. So those were the majority of the site changes, per se. And again, we have Rebecca Nolan. We retained her after the last meeting, and she can speak to the landscaping plan, which has been revised since the last time you had seen it. Of course, the last time you had seen it, we had just indicated that we would replant the original plan from 2000 with some larger calipers. But in this case, she's kind of gone back through, revised it, and verified that some of the invasive species that were part of the 2000 plan are no longer proposed. So unless there's any questions from me in particular, I'll hand it off to her or...
Notwithstanding the landscaping, do you have any additional information for us with regard to the architecture this evening?
I guess not necessarily. Were there questions from the board last meeting?
There might be some questions or comments from staff.
Just, Madam Chair, for clarification, there's a branding plan associated with the submission, which basically lays out a signage package. But if you look closely at that, it's a reskin of a building.
Correct.
There's no colors, there's no material callouts, there's...
So, yes, we...
I don't know if it's your red, orange, and tan building, your wood kind of EPE-type sided building.
Yeah. As part of this project, our client, JSC Management, again, they've taken over a large amount of Burger Kings here in the northeast from JNCO. And really, they're looking to do a reimage of all of those sites, and this being one of them. So one of the main components is a double drive-through, which we've been talking about here, as well as basically an exterior and an interior remodel of the store. So on the inside, you'll be getting all-new graphics, all-new, you know, tables, chairs, things of that nature. And on the exterior, you'll be basically, you know, refacing the building, bringing it to a modern look. And again, I apologize, I thought that information had been submitted previously, so it's not necessarily with me tonight. But again, I can provide that to the board as early as tomorrow via email. It would certainly indicate all the colors we're looking to do. Again, a much more modern building. You'll have more glass. I'm just trying to think of any that have been done in this area. And I can't think of any off the top of my head, but can certainly, again, provide that information tomorrow.
Is this a flat roof?
This would be a flat roof, yes.
And have you considered solar panels?
That has not been part of the consideration, no.
I know that there tends to be sort of a generic corporate architecture component to a lot of companies such as yours, but that might be something worth considering.
Okay, we can certainly look into that.
Sorry, just to follow on Maria's question, have any of your corporate stores attached solar components to them? Is that, have you done that at some other locations?
I am not aware of it. This particular client, again, he just acquired about 45 sites. Out of all the remodels that we've been working on, which is probably about 15 or 20 by now, that has not been a component. Typically, they are looking to, you know, again, just the facade of the building, not necessarily change any of the mechanicals. All the existing mechanicals would stay, basically, most of the kitchen equipment's going to stay, it would just be kind of the exterior image and the interior image as well.
This site plan is a considerable improvement. Thank you for taking into consideration our concerns.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Other questions with regard to the architecture materials and so on?
Madam Chair, again, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, just access to building materials. Brian Wagner is pulling up representative prototypes that exist with the Burger King franchise, but these are more muted colors. There are others that there's a top screening fence on that building, and some other buildings, that entire screening fence is red. In other portrayals, the colors are much less muted and more corporate and really backing for signage, where I could consider the entire side of the building part of the sign package.
I like the look of this building. My only comment would be, if it's at all possible, to make the logo smaller, the Burger King. I mean, other than that, I like the look of the building.
Again, Madam Chair, this is representative of a prototype. Again, without clarity, I can't represent that this is the building being proposed for South Kingstown. It's representative of a couple of prototypes that Burger King has within their portfolio on some of their rebranding.
I think what I, you mentioned some that have much brighter colors, where the whole building is sort of part of the branding, and I think it's a little bit nicer, the muted colors.
And this would be representative of the typical building. It's definitely more grays, a deeper red, moving away from kind of the more tan style they have now. So again, I can definitely get you those elevations, you know, tomorrow.
That would be helpful. I mean, over the years, we have learned that when a new corporate model comes about, there are generally variations within those. So it, you know, we can better suggest specifics so that something is better tailored for the community. Obviously, you work in urban, suburban, and rural communities, so that would be helpful. Let's move on to landscaping. Appreciate the fact that Ms. Nolan is here. I am not certain, however, looking at the plan, whether or not it was adequately conveyed what this board, I don't know when you came on board, but what this board was looking for. You may be aware of reflected what was approved in the past, what was removed, what is proposed, and improving the most northern portion of the plan. So I don't know if that was conveyed to you appropriately and in a timely manner. Certainly, looking at this, there are not enough specifics as to what I just referred to in terms of species, size. It's, you know, more generic. So it's my opinion that you would be able to go back and create a more specific plan and show us what was there, what is now not there, and size, caliper, and so on of appropriate plantings. I'm sure that you know, as a landscape architect, how important landscaping is to enhance the streetscape and the building. It provides infiltration. It is a, it can be a dual purpose, particularly in this situation, for both stormwater and aesthetics. It can serve to remove some impacts or reduce impacts from climate change, such as heat island effect. This is an area that is largely impervious, and it's, you know, considered a TMDL area, so there's water quality issues that go along with it. I don't know if other board members have additional thoughts.
Are you done?
Yes, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for coming out. I love the green space on top of the site. I'm so happy to see that. Can you tell me if that's going to be raised above the surrounding pavement, or if that's going to be flush with the pavement, so that they've gone some stormwater?
Sorry, did Mr. Rabbit?
Susan.
Sorry. Can you tell me if that green space in the back will have, will it be flush with the pavement to be able to absorb some stormwater, or is that raised up above the pavement?
So I'll defer to Todd. And just before we go too far, I do want to present the plans that I've put together because there are some, you know, I have some significant changes there, and I just want to go through them with you, especially if there are, like, specifics about species and contingencies that you guys want to see on the plans before we revise them again.
Just quickly to comment on that, the intent would be for that to be a raised island, you know, raised six-inch curve island. That's really kind of the high point of the site, and everything flows, you know, to the west there. So I don't know that we'd be capturing, you know, any rain necessarily or runoff. So the intent would be just to reduce the imperviousness there inherently, you know, increasing the stormwater.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Todd. And thank you, Madam Chair, and the committee here tonight for the opportunity to present. I was brought on, this will be my first meeting, although I have read the reports from the TRC, and I'm familiar with that board and some of the things that may have come up in the last couple meetings. So just to start off here, I think I want to just address something that's, that is very obvious to everyone that's familiar with the site. There was a significant number of trees that were fairly well thought-out plan, but again, 22 years old. It's a plan that showed, you know, trees that were in their mature state when they were to be installed, I think at three-inch caliper. However, many of the tree species and some of the shrubs and grasses are considered invasive. So we really needed to take a relook at that plan. What I did try and do was keep kind of the layout and the character of that original plan and add in new trees and shrubs, species that would be more appropriate for this area. So just to recap here, and I know this is difficult for, you know, this is a new client coming in, that they're coming in and inheriting a situation, but there were 10 pear trees that were cut down, four river birches, which are slated to be removed with this drive-thru, two ginkgo trees on the original plan, four Japanese maples. Those are just the larger caliber trees that were taken out, okay? So what we've really tried to do, so that gets us to about 20 trees, right? So when I came on, I think my initial thought was, let's try and get those 20 trees back initially. And so that's where I've started with this plan. So it, you know, I think I'm here tonight to hear your thoughts on that, and we can certainly talk about, you know, additional plant material. I think our client is really open to making this, you know, the pedestrian experience along the street better. I think the connection to the building is really important for them. So, you know, just keep that in mind, and we're very open to adding in any sort of, you know, stipulations of approval as we go ahead. So just to recap, the trees that I've put in, you'll notice that they're at two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper. I understand that that is a little bit smaller than what the TRC had originally recommended, but I just want to share my reasoning for doing so. That's because the desire of this board, I would, we would happily do that. But what I was trying to go for was to get these trees in the ground as soon as possible. Two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper for especially the syringa reticulata, the Japanese tree lilac, along the main island where the pears were removed. Those are really difficult to find in a three-to three-and-a-half inch caliper, which is really the only reason that I've listed them as I did. The other trees that we've included, two amalanchia, those are native trees. These are all trees and shrubs that are on the URI plant list. So we're really trying to look at bringing in some natives. And I'll talk about why I've chosen some of these and why I've taken, I've not replaced some of the ones that were in the original plan. Four red maple on the western side of the parking lot, where those Bradford pears are. I think everyone here knows that Bradford pears are no longer an accepted street tree. Birches, we're able to save one. It's right next to the dumpster area, so you'll note that. I've included five black cedar or arborvitae. Those, you know, are in clumps, and the idea here is to make it look a little bit more natural, not just a straight line that feels like a hedge and feels very corporate. So we're really trying to kind of mix it up a little bit. I've included two cryptomeria as well. And again, the, there's a couple notes on the plans about shrubs and grasses, and really, that's just to swap out anything that's invasive. So right now, there is existing miscanthus on the site. It's overgrown. It's really an invasive species. It should be removed as part of this plan. So we've put that forward. So those are, that's kind of the plant material I wanted to go over with you, and I don't know how much detail you want me to get into, but I'm happy to do so if there's other questions. The other note that I'll make is the rain garden mix that we've selected for the back area that Todd outlined, the stormwater area. You know, we've looked at, I've used this mix in other places. It's usually, you mow it twice a year. It's a low maintenance, but it tends to get some wildflowers in there, so it doesn't feel like, you know, a detention basin, per se. And then the last thing I want to note is that we're creating a pedestrian connection between the street and the existing building. And so to try and kind of, you know, make that obvious, that that's where pedestrians can enter the site, I think you're going to start seeing a lot more pedestrians in this area. I know that the rain gardens went in fairly recently, so, you know, I think there's been some investment on the streetscape itself, and so we're really just, you know, trying to enhance that without taking away from what's already out there. So I am happy to go into more detail. One of the things I, you know, I've talked to some of the staff about was some of the species, Japanese maples, for instance. You know, it's not something that I would typically specify in terms of a tree, especially in this area. There's a lot of salt in this area. You know, they, they're more of a specimen tree. It's going to be very difficult for the client to maintain them in the way that I think that you guys would want to see. So, you know, if there is interest in, you know, including, I believe there were four of those red maples, you know, I would suggest something along the lines of a magnolia, something within that four-to-six-foot height, but something that's a little bit, you know, more local, something that's more on the plant list rather than something specimen like the Japanese maple. Other than that, I think I've covered most of the comments that came up, but I know that there's been a lot of talk about the landscape, so I'm happy to answer any other questions or, you know, we're happy to put in some stipulations if the board feels necessary. Thank you.
Susan, do you have? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Good explanation. I do have a couple of questions. So in the front, you have the grasses being replaced with a better species of grass. But at one point, there were Alberta spruce out there and the maples. What else are you planning to put in aside from the grass and the two shade trees that you've indicated on here? Like, are you, are you planning to put in other things? We just need to talk about species, or is this what you were planning to go with?
So I was planning to just replace the grasses, the invasive grasses, since the rest of the planting beds, you know, they may be missing the Japanese maples, and I believe there's one dwarf Alberta spruce in the western island that actually still exists. But we were just proposing here to replace the grasses. So I think that's a question for the board, if, you know, if you feel that those Japanese maples, if you are looking for something that gives it more of that kind of, it's a little bit more of a specimen tree along the streetscape, then I think we're happy to entertain that, and the client would be willing to put that in.
Personally, I don't know that I would demand a replacement of the Japanese maple, although they were really nice, and they were really healthy.
No.
They're not there anymore.
Yeah.
So I would prefer to see something else go in, aside from having it open the way it is in this plan.
Yep.
And if there's other varieties that you'd like to propose instead of Japanese maple, I guess let's talk about other varieties to go in. But we were all, I can speak for everyone, we were all disappointed to see whatever happened on that site and all the mature trees taken down. I'm assuming that they're going to have all of the stumps ground from the site for replanting?
Yeah, so that's in my planting notes. There should be a note on maintenance on, I think it's sheet L103. And, you know, that, I believe that the stumps for the pears are still out there, so those would be ground and cleaned up as part of this site plan renewal.
Yeah, there are stumps along that entire strip to the west of the building?
Yep.
By the drive-through?
Yep.
The stumps out front, and then even stumps down the right-hand side, too?
Yep.
Like, the stumps are everywhere?
Okay. I think that that would be, we can definitely make a stipulation for that.
The stumps will be removed?
Yes.
Replanting?
Okay.
And I think that's my only comments right now. Thank you.
I agree with Susan's comments. Certainly, the streetscape view is really important, so that needs to be bumped up a little bit, and we need to have, and while Japanese maples may not be the best choice, I mean, they're expensive, they're, they take a long time to reach any kind of maturity. Some other type of specimen-like trees that would enhance the area would be very important, I think. So beefing up that area, looking at, I think the sense is that since they were completely eliminated, and this took a considerable amount of time for these, this plant material to reach maturity, we would like to see larger specimens. Choices are very good. The cryptomeria is awesome. Obviously, Acer, nice to use the natives, but again, it needs to be beefed up so that the same sense of plant material and mass and the same effect is apparent, you know, as soon as constructed.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can, I mean, upsizing it would be like a three to three and a half inch caliber, which I, again, I think would be just fine for finding red maples. It may be a little bit more challenging with the syringas, but we can certainly put it in, and what I normally do is put in an alternate, and if they want to downsize, then it needs approval of the landscape architect.
And the administrative officer.
Yep, we can do that.
So do we think pin oak is a suitable substitution for the maple? Like, is that, that's what it has in the planting plan right now? Pin oak?
Madam Chair, with regards to conversations I've had with Ms. Nolan, we did mention that a pin oak, in our opinion, would not be a suitable substitute for a red maple. The second aspect is, any alternatives to these primary plant choice needs approval, either from the board or the administrative officer. And then involved in too many scenarios on price points, swaps are made for a lesser type of tree, not because of availability, just because of price.
Understood.
You know, river birches, there are a lot of other trees that you could add in, and, you know, what we don't want to see is just a bunch of grasses along the frontage area.
Okay. In those, in those two planting beds that are existing?
Especially, and right now, there's a couple of planting beds that I think would just look like a hump of mulch, that they mulched over the old stumps that were there, so there's just big, black humps of mulch out there, which makes it even more obvious when you drive by that something's missing.
And as you know, I'm sure from experience, what is written into the maintenance plan is of utmost importance, because you won't be there, and it will be, you know, some landscape crew who may not be aware of proper techniques or proper management.
Do you have a bike hauler for the site plan? Is there a bike rack that you have planned, or can we get a bike rack?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think on this one we propose a bike rack, but certainly we can add one. Yeah, that's not an issue.
Great.
You can get a bike rack, and then, I don't know if it's possible, but maybe if there's, in the front, where you have that pedestrian, if you could work in a bench to make it look more inviting, from walking down the street, some type of, yeah, something like that, and a bike rack. But otherwise, I think you guys done an absolutely great job.
Yeah, we, we are in the process of, and you may have seen from the road project, to revitalize this area, make it more pedestrian and bike-friendly, et cetera. So those are excellent suggestions from Joe.
I have one more question, which actually might, I'm not sure who it's for. Along the eastern edge, on the far-left edge, what, can you remind me, do we know what's running along that property line? Is there a chain link fence there, or a guardrail, or what's, what's along the eastern edge?
Eastern edge, it was actually out there today, I don't know if it's on the ground.
So the chain link fence belongs to your neighbor?
Anything else? Go ahead, Rob.
So this is embarrassing, but quickly, what is a specimen tree?
Sure, no, it's not, not a problem at all. So I use the term specimen tree for anything that, you know, isn't in the standard nursery selection. So if, you know, something like a Japanese maple is, you know, they may need to go farther to find a tree like that. It can also, it can also be used, specimen is also used interchangeably with something that has flowers, that it's, it's a spring interest. It's something that you wouldn't necessarily see, you know, in a, in a commercial district in some ways. It's, it's often associated with a residential feel. So in this case, I would say that it's both of those things. You know, it's, it's kind of bringing it down to more of a pedestrian scale, feeling more like a residential, you know, like you're in a neighborhood, as well as selecting a tree that has some real interest, something like spring flowers, magnolia, something like a dogwood, or a red bud, or something like that.
Okay, my other concern would be the watering system is, you know, I hate to see sprinklers running into the street, and what is the plan for?
I don't believe that we, there is any plans to change the irrigation system. Is that correct? So there, I believe there is one out there already, unless, Todd, you know, otherwise.
And it's working well, it's well-aimed?
To be honest, yeah, I'm not aware if there is or is not one on site right now. We could certainly find that out, but the intent would be to just leave that as.
So to think of Burger King as eco-friendly, I certainly think the plantings and the solar panels really change the outlook of business.
And, you know, often if you modify that sort of corporate generic look, then it can be a good example for other Burger Kings to aspire to, so.
Absolutely.
We've certainly made that recommendation.
Something that you just said, making it look like it's part of a neighborhood, I think that, that's, that's a great, great idea. I hadn't heard it put that way before, but, yeah, aim for that.
I have one more question. Had you considered any space here that could be outdoor seating, especially now with COVID having sent us all outdoors? Is there any space here where you could incorporate some outdoor tables or benches or place to eat?
We had not in this particular case. That's something we could certainly look at. You know, given the way that the front is kind of situated, I'm not sure that there'd be an ideal location. You know, out back, we're, we are adding some green space, you know, perhaps we could do something in the northeast. I don't know how well that would be utilized, you know, by pedestrians. I mean, if that would be the board's wish to do something in the northeast corner, we could do that. I just don't know, you know, normally, to me, I would think outdoor seating, I'd want it kind of right at the front of the building, and I'm not sure we have a lot of space there in this case to do that. But again, we could certainly do some type of tables out in the northeast corner, if that would be, if you think that's something that people would utilize and something the board would.
I don't know. I think you're budding the Staples parking lot.
Right.
And the storage place. It's not really a pedestrian space.
Right.
But we can always hope for a transformation of the area as a whole, even if it's parcel by parcel.
Yeah.
So totally understand and agree with Susan.
In my fantasy, there'd be, there'd be space out front instead of parking, but I keep picking at you guys every time I see you, that I wish there was parking, no parking out front, but I'll leave it alone.
Any other thoughts with regard to landscaping or any other aspect of this application?
I think that the outside seating is a good idea, and maybe utilize, excuse me, I think the outside seating is a good idea, and maybe even be utilized by the employees. And I think that the northeast corner is not necessarily a bad place for it. I would just say that if they do use that for outside seating, that northeast corner, I'd like to see it stay pervious. So, I mean, I'd be fine with, if they wanted to put in some condition that just says that they have the option to do it, but just to leave that area, put tables in the area, but just to leave it pervious, whether it's for employees or just.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planting Director. Again, you're under DPR review advisory, the zoning, so your timeframes are good. I think your discussion tonight is asking the applicant to solidify and evaluate the landscaping that they provided based on the discussion and supplement it, giving the changes that have been made to the site, either just during acquisition or just prior to acquisition by the present owner. With regards to architecture, we'll work with the applicant. With regards to the color scheme, again, they have a few options within their corporate prototype palette, and to the points of the board members to try and make it fit within the community without, with also giving the entity brand identity. You can't make it look like, you know, a Cape Cod Friendly's building. That's not necessarily this area right now, but to Maria's point, one parcel at a time affects change over time. So it's better than.
Always the famous models in Maine, right?
Yeah, it's better, it's a better redo of some of the existing franchises we have in, in town with regards to building and the combination of landscaping.
The bio-retention basin in the back? Awesome. That was a great improvement. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate it. Would someone like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Susan, second from Joe. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's May 24th, the regular session meeting.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, in anticipation of the discussion, we'll formulate a motion on
That brings us to the end of our agenda. Joe is, has asked if somebody would be interested in attending the Affordable Housing Collaborative, which is meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM, I believe, because he is unable to attend. Could you just come up to the mic and ask the question? But I can answer that quickly, because.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stephen Dahl. I live in Kingston, Rhode Island, and a quarter mile from the Kingston Fire Station. And I'm, I'm asking if the agenda item of the Kingston radio, or not the Kingston one, but the Unit Six, I think it was, fire tower, radio tower is going to be talked about tonight, because it was on the agenda.
Yes, I recognize your name, because we did have correspondence from you.
Right. Oh, good. Thank you.
If you look at the agenda, however, you'll see on number two, just before development plan review, there's a CA in parentheses.
Oh.
That means it was a consent agenda item, and we discussed the consent agenda earlier, and there weren't any members who asked the item to be removed from the agenda. So that was passed after we made some changes to the minutes.
I see. Could I, the only thing that I saw on the, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that part of it.
I don't think, we're, legal counsel is shaking her head. We're not actually allowed to discuss that since it's already been passed.
I, I think, you know, for public comment, you can offer your thoughts, but it has been approved, so.
Okay, may I, may I do so?
Yes.
The only rebuttal line I saw to my comments were from Lance Whaley, and he said that the, the, he referred to an FCC document that said that basically that radio frequency from the radio tower would be okay. I have a rebuttal to that regarding the FCC being a, yes?
Yeah, I think you should reach out to them directly, because at this point, it's, it's off the planning board's table. They, they've, they've.
Right. I, I think it's a larger issue.
Madam Chair, you, you do not have public comment on your agenda this evening. This is an agenda item.
Unfortunately, we don't have any.
That has been addressed.
Regarding to our policy, however.
You see that the FCC is a captured agency. The Harvard Ethics Publication has detailed an exposé about the FCC. There's a revolving door between industry and.
Madam Chair.
Government.
Excuse me?
The FCC, yes.
Unfortunately, we're not, we can't be terribly helpful, however, perhaps Jamie and/or Amy can refer you to the best venue in which to have a conversation with regard to the town policy. Ideas, folks?
That would be town council.
Town council.
Town council.
And they have, at every meeting, they have a portion of their agenda that states comments from interested citizens. So you don't have to have a specific agenda item on their agenda.
Right.
In order to speak, although it's always helpful to give them a heads-up, so they have background material related to what you wish to.
Yeah, last.
May I make a suggestion as well?
Sure.
Should this come up again, a new communications tower, that we not put it on the CIA? Just so that we have the opportunity.
I missed that it was on the CIA. I would have said things about it. I missed that completely.
And, and this is also an outgrowth of probably a TRC vote? Jamie? Who was the planning board person for that? Do you recall?
It's Peter.
Right, I did send information to the Technical Review Board on the, I think it was the 11th of this month.
And, and the Technical Review Committee does not replace the planning board, however, in certain instances, they are allowed to forward an item to the planning board and recommend that it be a consent agenda item. Any member of the planning board can ask to have that removed and discussed, which would have been, you know, you could have actually raised your hand at that point and made us aware that you were here for that, and then we could have engaged in conversation.
Right. It's, it is difficult for me to come to these meetings in person. I have a disability from radio frequency radiation. In 1996, Sweden made, recognized the condition. I'm Swedish, aren't I? And I, the American Disabilities Act does cover this as well. I have a note from my doctor. So is it possible for me to, in, to attend a meeting virtually?
I don't believe so. I, we have, as of, what was it? Beginning of March, the executive order from the governor expired, requiring everyone to attend in person. And although you can observe the meetings on Clerk Base online, anyone who wishes to speak must do so in person.
I see. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? We have a TRC, we already have someone scheduled for the TRC who volunteered at an earlier meeting, which is May 11th, which is why I had it on my agenda. Oh, come up to the mic, please, and just state your name for the record. Sure.
Are we still discussing the tower, or?
I'm not sure, we'll wait and.
I'm, the tower discussion's over, although I came down for that. I'm James Murdock of South Kingstown. And so just want to comment that I did read these, this agenda as a sequence. And, you know, approval of minutes, and then public hearings, and then a list of projects. And to me, having a CA in front of something here that is, was actually in a consent agenda and really not, you know, was confusing to me. So my request would be, if it's, could the minutes, they, they look like they're sequential, could the formatting of consent agenda items be in the consent agenda section?
So, Mr. Murdock, the agenda has a note about how the consent agenda will be handled.
I do see the note. You have a planning board member that was also confused by, I mean, I'm just saying. Doesn't mean you can't change the format to make it better. Because you're trying to like call me on, there's a note there, that's kind of like an asterisk.
It, it does seem that it would be reasonable to have, it's perhaps as an item in the agenda that would have the consent agenda and have everything listed that was on the consent agenda. That would probably make it easier for the public to understand. Have you seen that done, Amy, in any other communities?
I think this is, the format of our agenda follows how the council agenda, I mean, most agendas are formatted exactly like this one.
I, I would just, I'm sorry, I think it is a good idea to just list those. It says consent agenda, and then have those items right there at the top. I think that's a reasonable request.
Madam Chair, the difficulty is, is those items fall under particular development categories, such as subdivision and land development projects. And the difficulty is, is, and we've had this discussion, both at the planning level and the council level, with regards to handling a consent agenda. Things can come off the consent agenda item. And then once they do, if they're under consent agenda, you have to reshuffle your entire agenda to put them in a slot, either before or after other items. So again, this, this is the format that, it's my understanding, the clerk as well as the council follows. So again, we can discuss this in the future. I understand the points that, that's made.
Although you'd want them, for example, public hearings, belong under public hearings, land development projects, but you could have an additional section just before adjournment that would list all the consent agenda items. So even though it might appear somewhat redundant, it might clarify it for the public.
Or just highlight them, would that be?
We can look at that.
It's, it's certainly worth exploring. Obviously, two members of the public were unaware of it, and our newest planning board member is.
No, I, I mean, I'm familiar with the CA from the council meetings, but I do think it might not be a bad idea to just highlight them so they stand out a little bit.
Agreed.
Or spell out CA. CA is like a code that I just didn't, I just read past.
Madam Chair, item B in your agenda says consent item, consent agenda. Parenthesis CA. And then there's a paragraph that explains, everything that has a CA is part of the consent agenda.
Okay, but we, we talk about at our work sessions, making the planning board more accessible and understandable and reachable to and by the public. And so if there's something that we can do as simple as highlighting, I think we should do it.
Old text, something like that. Certainly, I agree with that.
So is.
The biggest concern was that the, went over the issue without giving the public the opportunity to discuss it, and then I invited the TRC. So how do we make sure that, you know, just put something on the consent agenda when somebody's in the audience to say something?
Right.
So if there are people here, can we take it off? Can we kind of do a do-over?
No.
Not once it's passed?
Okay.
No, but I mean, just for future projects, I think if there's something that's on the consent agenda that at all has the possibility of public interest, we should probably just say, before we approve this on the consent agenda, is anybody here that wants to?
Because I, yeah, I read everything on the consent agenda. I don't, I don't think you were here, I'm not sure if you were here in the beginning of the meeting. I read everything, and I specifically even read the location and the plat and lot number of this. Hoping that if anyone was here for that, because it's, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, and therefore, it can be put on the consent agenda, but.
Just, I'm trying to get this from the devil's advocate. Sometimes the people that are here, maybe their first plan comes in.
Yes. True.
Sorry, Joe, but we, we won't hear, that will, unfortunately.
So, so the, what I think, the, again, I just want to make sure that things that are on the consent agenda or if there's any public interest, anybody's here, that they recognize what we're doing, and we, that by bringing on a consent agenda or approving that. And if there is something, we, I think we want to reach out to the audience and ask them, and make sure they realize, because it may be somebody that's new to a planning meeting and does not recognize the significance of us approving the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
You know, we, we have also talked about in some of our work sessions, updating that Citizens Guide to Development, and this would be a good item to add to that. And then, of course, it should be posted on the town's website as well. Those that spend time looking at the town website. Do, unless they're interested in a specific item, but again, the more information that we have out there, the better it is.
So Madam Chair, given the discussion this evening, we will look at our agenda in, in highlighting items on the consent agenda. We'll also have discussions with council on consent agenda items and the potential to receive public comment on the consent agenda item. And if it was taken off a consent agenda item, how do you then take public comment without the notice of a hearing? So we will look at the legal ramifications of that. So again, we'll make sure we're following proper procedure. Because again, decisions you make on land use matters are all appealable.
And, and to add to what Joe mentioned with regard to the TRC, the TRC is a public meeting, and anyone can attend the TRC, even though it's not a public hearing per se. I have always felt that the public is limited, however, because it's during the week, in the morning, when most people are at work. And therefore feel that the, the TRC has an important role, but it should always be, they should always defer to the board in most of these items. Anything else? We already had one in advance for a change. Unless someone would like to volunteer for June?
For the affordable.
Oh, for the affordable?
I cannot.
Morning.
There's nothing else, motion to adjourn? Motion from Joe, second from.
Paul.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.